Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee. Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Here.
Trustee Spurling is not here, but everybody else is present today. Move on to public comment this evening, which is a two-minute opportunity for any member of the public or who's here this evening that would like to address the board on any matter that's not really on the agenda. If you're on the agenda, come up after this, but are there any residents that wishes to address the board? Is there a resident? I said that wrong. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the proclamation for Public Works Week. I'll read the proclamation, then entertain a motion for approval. Whereas public works services provided in this community are an integral part of citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and snow removal. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by their people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Matt Brawley, President of the Village of Montgomery, hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through May 24th, 2014, as Public Works Week in the Village of Montgomery, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public works and to recognize the contributions public works officials make every day to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life of the general public. And with that, I will entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz. Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. Move right on to the second proclamation this evening, which is Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Village of Montgomery play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the Village of Montgomery. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now therefore, I, Matt Brawley, Village President of the Village of Montgomery, call upon all citizens of Montgomery and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 11th through 17th, 2014, as Police Week. Which with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of Montgomery to observe Thursday, May 15th, as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. I further direct that the flag of the United States be displayed at half-staff on all village government buildings on May 15th in conformance with the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994. With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heinz.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving on to item D this evening, which is the first fun part of the meeting, which is Eagle Scout recognition. Tonight we have two gentlemen with us who have recently received, they're from the same den, right? The same organization, who have recently received their Eagle Scout. And we have Louis Diatomo and Mark Bagalski. And with that, I'd like to ask you gentlemen to come down to the podium if you don't mind and introduce yourself to the board and maybe a little bit about your project that earned you the Eagle Scout.
All righty. My name's Mark Bagalski. I'm on Troop 34. I just received my Eagle Scout project, or my Eagle Scout rank. My project consisted of me leading a group of around 45 volunteers, family and friends, to clear a wooded lot of invasive plant species six feet and under. It was about the length of a football field. It was very successful.
Excellent.
I'm A. Louis Diatomo. I'm also from Troop 34, and my project was for the Hessa House of Aurora. I constructed six wooden benches for their guests to sit on during the day and night.
Excellent. Thank you. Let me come up there. I do have a certificate for both of you guys that I'll present to you guys on behalf of the village and the village board this evening. Obviously, what you guys did is a great success. It takes a lot of hard work and dedication. Just before I came in here, I searched all the famous people who have achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. Dwight Eisenhower, Steven Spielberg, the Community Development Director of the Village of Montgomery. He didn't come up on the list, but Rich Young is also an Eagle Scout. So with that, Mark, if you want to head up there with me and we'll take a quick picture?
Yes, sir.
Just to the front. Board. Usually, we do have people come and go. And feel free to pass along to any other member of your pack that does achieve this great achievement. We certainly would like to recognize them in the future because it is, one of the fun things that we do get to do is meet residents who have made such a great achievement. So, thank you and I appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to item E this evening, which is I'll introduce John Philipchuck, and he's going to address the board regarding the CBS Outdoor signage request.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. My name is John Philipchuck. I'm an attorney representing CBS Outdoor. My offices are at 111 East Jefferson Avenue in Naperville, Illinois. By the way, Rich, congratulations. I should have known that you probably reached that high honor in the scouting. That's wonderful. The, well, that's okay. That's all right. The current graphic that we have on the screen indicates three existing billboards that are located within the Village of Montgomery that are owned by CBS Outdoor. Those three billboards were all constructed in 1999 with permits that were issued by the Village of Montgomery. At that time, billboards were permitted within the manufacturing districts. As the trustees know, subsequently, the zoning ordinance was amended and they're no longer permitted. They are considered legal non-conforming uses now. The issue that we have that we want to present to you is the billboard that's located on Bypass 30. We have the one on Bypass 30, and we have two up on Route 31 at the north end of Montgomery on the east side of the road. The billboard that's located on the Bypass 30 location is being taken by an eminent domain action by State of Illinois IDOT. With that reconfiguration of interchange, they're taking the right-of-way and the additional right-of-way that they're requesting would take that billboard down. We are currently in a court action. It has not gone to trial yet to determine what the proper amount of reasonable compensation is. And that's part of the reason we wanted to talk to the board, because CBS would like to maintain that sign. It would only take a movement of about 15 feet north from its present location, and it would again, you know, comply with the setback for that particular location. It is on property that's Zoned M1. The other use on that property is the gas distributor, the trucks there on that site. And what we were hoping to do is discuss a variance or whatever procedure the board or your village attorney might suggest as to be the proper mechanism for addressing the issue. But what we were hoping to do is have a discussion about perhaps this sign would be allowed to be moved, and perhaps that northernmost sign that's over on Route 31 could be taken down, which would result in a net benefit to the village, that there would be one less billboard in town, if that is in fact still the stated goal. Do you have the next slide? Or do I control it? This is looking east on Bypass 30. Of course, that ramp is being reconfigured, but to the right is where the ramp would come up from Route 31, and you'd be going westbound on bypass Route 30. It's a V-shaped panel, signage on both sides of the panel, so it's visible from westbound traffic as well as the eastbound traffic. I happened to go by just to see where the advertisers were tonight, and I noticed two businesses from Montgomery. One is Menards and the other one is To Be Sam's Club. In fact, I think three of the four panels over on the two signs on 31 are from Menards. So you'll see them quite often advertising on the CBS Outdoor billboards. The, if you could go to the next slide. This is looking southbound on Route 31. This is the northernmost sign. The property line is the village limit, so as you come from Aurora and you approach Montgomery, that's the first thing you see. On the left there is that particular billboard. It's a double-faced billboard, and to the south end of the property is another one almost identical. And again, those were permitted in 1999. So the thought would be that that particular billboard could be removed in exchange for us being able to keep the one over on Bypass 30. So the sign ordinance has a provision in it for variances, and if that be the direction that the trustees might give us, we'd be certainly interested in making an application and going through the process. The other benefit that obviously is inherent in these eminent domain cases is the amount of money that the taxpayers of Illinois will have to come up with to compensate not only the landowner, but obviously the CBS Outdoor for that taking. We estimate that our damages would be in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars. Not sure what amount would be arrived at for the actual property owner. But in these cases, your property owner obviously is harmed as well as the outdoor billboard industry and the loss of revenue. And another opportunity for, in this case, local businesses that are good tax generators or will be, in the case of Sam's Club for the Village of Montgomery, they want to be able to advertise their locations and draw customers, of course, to their business location. So we would hope that you might keep that in mind, that we feel our proposal would be a win-win. There'd be a savings to the taxpayers of Illinois because we wouldn't have to take a claim for total removal and elimination of that sign, and yet you could still eliminate a billboard within the community. That's what we're proposing that you think about, and I'd like to get some thought, some direction from the board as to whether that's something that you think we should pursue.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Are there any comments from the board in the discussion?
A half a million dollars, John, that's long-term, like 10, 20 years?
Yeah, the lease on the bypass 30 runs through 2029. That's how long the lease is in place for. The leases on the, the two on North Aurora, the current lease is up in 2019, and in both cases, they could be renewed year to year. That's the way they're structured.
The one on 30 was, is to expire 2029?
2029, yes.
When we passed this ordinance years ago, I think there was a lot of, we had a lot of things going, and there was different people using the boards. When you look at that and you're moving on only 15 feet, and we got Sam's on one side, Menards on the other, I know the two on Lake Street, Menards is used for a long, long time. Maybe not three, but they're using three right now. The fourth one, I think, is Augustana, where my granddaughter might go to school. So I've been, it takes you a couple of times to go by to read exactly, second in the nation, third in the, or whatever in the state. But it does generate, I guess, some interest for Augustana that they, to get kids to go to that college. But when Menards got three of the four, and I know John needs all the money he can get for that property as far as revenue until it develops, I don't, I just don't, I can't see dropping that one sign. What you're saying is we're dropping Menards for, you know, for two signs, or two sides. And I don't, they've used that sign for not just lately, maybe they're doing it lately because of Sam's, but they've been using that sign for a long time. I just hate to see, I hate to see it go just as a choice between this and that type of thing.
If we were to approve the moving of the sign on 30, regardless of whether or not they take down one of the signs on 31, how far into the future does it allow, is it indefinitely, if we were to approve moving the sign to 15 feet?
It depends on the mechanism you use. If it were the grant of a variance, it would probably be indefinite. If it were a special use or some other zoning control that we would have to create that doesn't exist right now, I suppose that there could be an argument that there might be a temporal aspect to it, although sitting here as we speak, I can't really think of the rationale for that right now. But it's possible.
My next question. If this sign is allowed to be moved, you'd stated that you're in the middle of legal action right now to determine probably what the value or the lost revenue is. If this sign were to be moved, would that legal action still proceed?
Typically, what would happen in that instance is that there would be a number that would be arrived at for the cost of the relocation.
Okay.
And, but nothing as far as, you know, loss of, you know, advertising business or anything like that, which is where the bigger number comes in.
Sure. In, and I don't know what year that the previous village board decided that they wanted to eliminate billboard signs, but it looks like in 2019, this is 2014, so in five years, those two signs along Highway 31 are coming down anyway.
Is that true? Are those coming down? That's when the lease is up, and do they have this special use so that?
I believe that, I can speak to one of them. I think it was the Xenos property. Definitely within the grant of the special use for that property, a timeframe for removal of that sign was imposed. So I know one of them is coming down. I have heard from Community Development that the other one has a timeline as well. I just don't recall that myself, but I have a reason to believe it. So I think both are coming down.
Okay.
At some point, but I don't know the point.
So, like I said, if it was a directive of a previous board to eliminate the billboard signs, in five years, you've eliminated the billboard signs. So it, those are my opinions.
What it was, was, remember the lollipop signs where you had a stick in the, and that was big all over this whole entire area, not just our town, but we jumped on that to eliminate that, so you wouldn't have every, every building having that. And somehow, we got into the bigger signs because there was a few that were falling apart and things like that. They were old, and we just got, we eliminated them. But actually, these are in pretty good locations. They're kept real well, and, you know, I don't, I think, maybe I'll ask Rich this. What about the two signs, Rich, on Campbell's Play? Is that Montgomery or is that in, right next to it, in county? Light Construction? In the same way, I think there's a sign up by Caterpillar that's not our jurisdiction. So what you're eliminating is, I mean, they could put a swiggle on that sign, and we're eliminating our own companies, basically, which is kind of crazy. I can see in five years or something, or 2019, all of a sudden Aurora starts putting everything on their signs, and Menards doesn't put anything on there or something. Then I can see what good is it to us? But right now, when three of the four are Menards, I mean, I would think Menards would be in here saying, why are you eliminating our advertising for? And they are a big sales generator.
One thing that I would jump in there is a previous board, or many previous boards ago, they decided that billboards are not appropriate for the village. And so whether that was the intent or not, that was the ordinance that was passed. The past village board that was here prior to the election took a very hard line on that issue and said, in a very similar situation with road widening and a taking, that billboards weren't appropriate in that area. So I guess the question for this board is, regardless of the intent of the previous boards, is do you feel that billboards should be or are appropriate in our Orchard Road or Route 30, specifically Route 30 today? If you feel that that's appropriate, then we can take the next step. If you don't feel like billboards are an appropriate use in Montgomery, then we won't.
And just one distinction. This isn't an all or nothing proposition. If you say that you feel that this particular location on Bypass 30 is appropriate, but you feel that there are very few other locations in the village that would be appropriate, there are ways for us to design around that so that we can grant it in one location and not open the barn doors literally wide to the entire community based on, you know, there's some unique characteristics. It's a state-controlled, limited-access highway. You know, it's distinct from pretty much any place else in the village. So if you said, I'm okay with this one, but I don't want any others, we can make that happen. This is not all or nothing, just so you understand.
I think that's what somewhat happened. This has been 10 years. I would say it was back in about 2002 when that was somewhere around there when it was passed, and it was because of, this looks good, this looks good, so we'll let you have those, like you say, until a few more years, and it was just location.
If I could make a comment to trustee Youngerman's question about that five years, Attorney Anderson and I haven't had a chance to specifically talk about this, but I think I have a little different bent on that five years for this particular situation. And it would be my opinion that those billboards don't necessarily have to go in five years. The lease that's with the property owner, it was a multi-year lease, but in, when it goes to year to year, I think Steve may have said, well, yeah, then they would have to go. And we haven't had a chance to discuss this, but I have some things I need to bring to his attention that I think he may agree with me, that, oh, yeah, you're right. Those, as long as the landowner continues to lease, or they have a right to lease, they can lease, but we haven't had that conversation.
Thank you.
My thoughts on this would be, if we were talking about bringing a new billboard into town, I think the ordinance would still be very much an issue. But since this one is here and it's being displaced by road improvement, if you're not proposing any material change to the sign, and if we're talking about moving it a few feet in a different direction, to me, that's a different circumstance, and it's different from the one on Orchard where they were proposing a dramatically different type of sign that wasn't acceptable to a lot of people. I'm more favorably disposed to letting this company move the same sign they have into a different location that's hopefully still not objectionable or a safety issue for traffic.
Now, related to the eminent domain lawsuit, would this sign that you're proposing that would come down on Route 31, would that play into the cost factor? Would the lost revenue from this sign that you're offering to take down come into play on your?
No, no, it would not. We'd be dealing strictly with that sign, and if we get an agreement with the Village of Montgomery, then the amount of compensation would only be the cost of relocating the sign. It wouldn't have any to do with advertising. CBS's policies, they don't even try to claim monies for the lost time that they're down while it comes down and goes back up again. So it's strictly the relocation costs of moving the sign. That would be it. So what happens with the loss of revenue on the other side is no bearing on it.
Has this issue been raised with the plan commission?
No, it hasn't.
In the opinion of staff, is that an appropriate step as well?
Well, I think, yes, tonight is just a discussion item. Would, depending on, would it be a variance or special use?
Thank you. We'd go forward to the plan commission as a matter of course.
And the plan commission previously passed an ordinance for billboards to the village board that we voted down. So they have experience in this, in this area before, so. Trustee Heinz, do you have any thoughts on the issue?
I can't place that one on 30 though, bypass 30. Where does that look?
It's across from the self-storage.
Pardon me?
Across from the self-storage, right? Right in front of the gas.
The mother one's got five more years to go, and those two on Lake Street?
My point was, I'm not sure of the dates and times, so I can't say it's five years exactly, but I believe that they have limitations. But John's telling me, maybe I'm wrong.
Politely.
Politely, very politely. It happens all the time.
Dead average title is going to help. The Village of Monte Lake Street, I don't see just letting the time run out on five years.
It's tough to address that one, because I'm trying to address one, I'm trying to address this Route 31, and the 31 signs are kind of muddling things up. It was my recollection that that special use for that property was put in place with the agreement of that property owner. At least that's what I was thinking, that those signs would come down during the term of that special use. And if that's not the case, that was certainly the intent of this board. And if that's not the case, that was certainly the intent of this board. That being said, you know, we could talk about it all night. If anybody else has anything that they wanted to add on the topic tonight, or we can just take a straw poll. If you're in favor of doing something, whether it's work through a variance process, have them submit for variance, or a special use that Plan Commission can then recommend to us, or if you're not in favor of the relocation, you can say that as well. I feel like the billboard situation that we had on Orchard was, was although LED, very similar. And I don't remember, I thought that we asked if a static was a possibility, and maybe the property owner at that time said he wasn't interested. But it was the same thing of a taking from, from the government, from the Kane County in that, in that stance, so. Can I write?
One quick last question. How long has that sign on 30 been there? As far as I remember, it's not forever, but it was long.
1999. All three of them went up in 1999 with permits issued by the Village of Montgomery.
Okay.
I would favor a special use if it's to be deliberated.
Okay. Doug?
Yeah, I tend to lean that way as well, for, as long as it's not tied to any value for the ones on 31.
Okay. Steve?
This is a hard decision for me. You know, I have to be consistent. I have to, I have to say no. I have to be consistent with what I, and what and how I voted for on, on Route 30, or excuse me, Orchard Road.
Okay. Trustee Hines?
I'd say no.
Danny?
I'd say yes on all of them.
That's great. And Trustee, Spurling is absent today, so that's a 3-3 tie. I think at this point, what we, really is the board's pleasure at this point, without speculating what her position on the issue might be, we could talk about it at our next meeting in two weeks, or send it to Plan Commission. But I guess if we know we're going to vote it down, why would we do that? So we'll go ahead and add this to the agenda for our meeting in two weeks, on May 29th is on a Tuesday, and we'll discuss it then. 27th?
And then maybe we can have the dates and some more details to answer those questions?
27th. Does that work for you guys?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Consent agenda this evening, I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting, April 14th. Minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of April 22nd. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting of April 28th. Minutes of the Executive Session of April 28th. The Building Report for April of 2014. Accounts Payable through May 6th, 2014. And the cancellation of the Committee of the Whole Meeting on May 20th, 2014. And I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Youngerman, second by Hines. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bund?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
And that carries 5-0. Moving on to items for separate action this evening. Resolution 2014-007, authorizing the execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement. And with that, I will turn it over to the Chief, please.
Thank you very much. In late 2002, early 2003, we entered into an agreement with the State of Illinois, ILEAS, Illinois Law Enforcement System, Alarm System. And recently, they wanted us to update that agreement. I sent that to the attorney recently, and they have approved that resolution which is attached. I'm asking for approval for that agreement to continue.
Thank you. Are there any comments, questions from the board? More a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bund?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
And that carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to Item B this evening, which is the 2014 Proposed Street Maintenance Program. And I'll ask Public Works Director Mike Poobens for a summary on this.
Thank you, President of Raleigh. And your pack tonight is a request for approval for our 2014 Street Maintenance Program. As you can see on the cover sheet, we have the streets listed. The, we'll skip overseas and through the Boulevard for just a moment. Winter Hill Circle, Edgewater Court, High Point Court, and Winter Hill Court, as well as Village-wide patching, were anticipated for this year, and were part of our comprehensive street maintenance inventory. As we've had several discussions on the need for work on Seasons Ridge Boulevard, we're also recommending that Seasons Ridge Boulevard resurfacing be performed this year. That is an additional $395,000 beyond what was budgeted. We do have funds available in our MFT account. They're unobligated funds. We have additional funds beyond that, but those are already spoken for on other projects. So we put together the program this year. It will use up the remainder of our unobligated funds. So if we move forward on this, we'll be able to do all these streets and some patching, but we'll be then going pretty much from month to month on new money. The remainder of our balance will be, as I said, spoken for. You may note that the, the total, the 749 is about $14,000 more than the sum of our unobligated balances and budget. We decided to just go with our, our original numbers. We think we'll see some savings through the bidding and construction process. If need be, we can trim back the patching to stay within the, the budget or the available amount. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just...
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Have you ever checked Briar Cliff and Seasons Ridge Boulevard down to Douglas Road? That's in real bad shape, too.
It is in bad shape, but I have checked that. There's a number of other streets that are in bad shape. And what we've tried to do is put together the, the biggest program we can this year, including Seasons Ridge. That seemed to be the, the priority street this year. We'd love to do more streets, but we're out of money. That, that's about as clearly as I can put it. We have no other MFT money available.
Are those courts? Is the roads that bad in those courts? The cul-de-sac, like, that's the court you're talking about, right?
Correct. They're not as bad as like Seasons Ridge, for instance, but each year when we plan our program, we don't necessarily do the absolute lowest-rated streets first. We try to do a mixture of streets to keep our average rating index at a certain level. We also gain some benefits in bidding and constructing by trying to keep streets in, in the same area. So part of the reason for doing the courts is that they're right there on, on Winter Hill Circle, rather than having them pave Winter Hill Circle and then go to the far west end and do a court, and then north, south, and east, which just adds mobilization costs to our, to our program. So it's a combination of, of condition and efficiency in putting those on this program.
Okay, thanks. Anyway, for, at Seasons Ridge Boulevard, being in there, there's more traffic that comes down Briar Cliff and Seasons Ridge Boulevard than you can shake a stick at in the morning and then at night at work time. That thing's packed.
Particularly with the Route 30 construction. It's picked up.
I would agree with Trustee Hines on the Briar Cliff issue. If it's not, because it's not in, in this, this year, do you anticipate it being in next year's?
Well, we, just give me one second, check some numbers. I think we're bringing in about $35,000 a month, so we have about a $400,000 MFT budget. We'd have to look at the cost to do Briar Cliff. I mean, you can see Seasons Ridge by itself is $400,000, and it is not nearly as long as Briar Cliff. So if the question is, will we have enough money available next year to do Briar Cliff from end to end, I would say no, we will not. We do have money budgeted to reevaluate our roads this year, and we'll do that, and we'll bring together, we'll bring forward another five-year program that'll have a recommended program of streets that we think we should do. And we can put together various funding and cost scenarios, you know, MFT-only, MFT-plus, MFT, et cetera.
When you do Seasons Ridge Boulevard, you're going to take that down deeper, just a couple inches off of there, aren't you? Because you've got to have a better base underneath there.
Yeah, this isn't a complete reconstruction. It's a, it's a heavy overlay, but it will not be a complete construction. We are doing some curb work on the, on the median curbs to raise them up, to try to improve the cross slope, which will help get water to the gutters better, which in the long run helps with the pavement condition. You can imagine that water sitting on the pavement soaks in, the base gets wet. We did take some cores, some pavement cores on both Seasons Ridge Boulevard and Briar Cliff. I don't have the results with me tonight. My recollection is though they were surprisingly good, meaning there was more base there than we anticipated. So we'll, I think that's something we would, would look at this summer and winter, as we put together the comprehensive, the revised comprehensive plan, to see where we're at. But this won't be a complete reconstruction. Again, we're going to do a, an over, milling and overlay. We'll probably do some patching if there's some areas that are just completely deteriorated. And then we'll, we're going to try to improve the cross slope to improve drainage.
The cross slope is part of the reason we think that it failed so quickly?
I think so, yeah. Again, believe it, if you think of it, asphalt is just a bunch of rocks compacted together. It's not compacted 100%. Water will soak into asphalt pavement, and eventually will soak down into the base. And then once the base gets wet, if you don't have a positive way to get the water out, it just sits under there. And just repeated loading cycles. And again, with the increase in traffic this year, combined with the freeze thaw and extreme temperatures, they all add up to, to the deterioration, but drainage is certainly part of that, that equation.
Director Poobens, I have a question. The, at the bottom of your memo, you have the fiscal impact budget account.
Yes.
Is that the construction or is that not the construction?
That's actually the budgeted amount for this year. That's what's been approved in the budget. So it accurately reflects what we have in the approved budget. It does not reflect the expenditure of, of unobligated MFT funds. So in that regard, it doesn't, again, it doesn't add up to the $795,000, 749, excuse me.
Sorry.
It's all right.
And what are some of the obligated MFT funds? Does that include salt?
$160,000 for snow removal. Douglas Avenue resurfacing, there's still $70,000. That's a, we call a LAPO, local agency. Used to be LAP, still getting used to LAPO. Functional overlay, but that's through the Council of Mayors. Mill Street Bridge, we've got $30,000 for preliminary engineering. The Mill Street Bridge deck doesn't look bad, but our belief is that it's going to need some fairly major repairs. I doubt Route 30 cost share is $103,000 that we're using MFT. Montgomery Road cost share, we made a commitment to Kane County to give them $70,000 for the Phase 1 study. Emergency vehicle preemption, we have an $11,000 obligation. Route 31 cost share is $26,000. So our total obligations are $810,000. So it adds up.
And that $160,000 for snow removal, that is our full budget amount for this fiscal year?
Correct.
And is that about roughly what we spent last year? Did we spend more?
We actually spent a little less than that, because we weren't able to get salt. And we made it through the winter, because we started with about 1,000 tons in reserve. Going into next year, we may, we probably have about 200 tons at most in reserve, and it's pretty poor quality salt. Not that it'll still melt, but it's, I think, you know, when they really get to the bottom of the piles, it's... So what we hope to do is spend that 160, and we'll be monitoring all the line items to see if there's extra funding available, and we may come back to you at some point next winter and say, hey, we have funds available that we aren't using somewhere else, can we buy more salt? But our intent right now is to use every nickel of the 160, because we'd like to re, to build up that stockpile again.
Well, I made it. There's a couple new holes in Briar Cliff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the last year of the five-year program. Were we able to, we didn't leave off a street to get Seasons Ridge Boulevard in there this year, did we?
No, I don't believe we did, President of Raleigh. We can confirm that, but I think we, we moved some of them around in years, but I believe we completed everything that was in the original five-year plan.
We, we did complete the five-year plan, plus some additional streets. We did fulfill that obligation. And just incidentally, the streets that were in, you know, that were listed this year, are, some of them are in pretty bad shape. Winter Hill, I think, was like, the Winter Hill Court had a PCI of 22, High Point Circle 26, Winter Hill Circle 29. So those are all very poor pavement conditions. So, you know, they're, they're in need of resurfacing as well, but they were part of the original five-year plan.
And certainly, Seasons Ridge Boulevard is definitely a need for anybody who's driven down it this year. My only hesitancy is, obviously, with the bad winter that we had last year, just want to make sure that we're completely covered on our salt, so that we don't do this road and then get into a situation where we're cutting from the budget in the fall or in the winter to catch back up. So that's, if you guys are confident that we'll have enough salt, that that 160 will be enough for our supply, not that you know the winter, but I just don't want to get in a situation where we are cutting from the budget to do Seasons Ridge out of sequence.
Certainly, I, I believe that's the case. I'd want to confirm with Finance Director and the Village Administrator, we do have reserve funding. If it got to that point, where we, if we had another tough winter and we needed salt, I mean, those funds are available. Again, I'm not pretending to be a finance director. I'm too good at this job.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board on this? If there are none, we'll, I don't know, the agenda, it's an action item?
It is.
So with that, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Take the roll, please.
Trustee Bund?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
And that carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Move on to items for discussion this evening, the sales tax referendum. And I'll ask Justin for an overview of what we have this evening.
Did, did we skip an item? Proposed street maintenance program?
That was that.
Oh.
You just voted for it.
Sorry, I lost my spot. Blame it on the chemotherapy.
Thank you, Village President of Raleigh. What's in front of the board tonight are two different items in regards to the sales tax referendum. The first item directly behind the cover is a revised resolution. We did speak with Village Attorney, and the resolution has been changed slightly to add the word "maintain," and then also add in roads, the actual word "roads." Last time, it, it talked about improving the public infrastructure, so those slight changes have been added in accordance with the discussion from the board. Are there any questions on that piece?
I'm having difficulty finding that new language in the agenda pack.
It's at the bottom of the first page of the resolution. It says, shall the Village of Montgomery, in order to maintain?
Okay.
And/or improve the village's roads? So it's in that first line of the actual question.
Okay.
At the bottom.
Does that address the concerns that the board had in our last discussion?
Yes, thank you. And for me, it...
Yes, thank you. And for me, it does. It clarifies exactly what our intent is. And this is the question that would appear on the ballot.
Correct.
Any questions on that from the board this evening? Yeah, I think, I like the change. I think that it's important.
The second item that the board asked staff to look at was if we were to provide a property tax rebate, what those amounts would be. And so, what was in the packet, plus there were three sheets that I handed out to each of you at your spaces tonight. The first page behind the, the resolution is the existing sources. It goes through 2055, and it, it basically shows what, how long it would take if we were to do absolutely nothing.
So, you, as I look at this, if we do absolutely nothing, when I'm 82 years old, we'll finally have a surplus and be able to do the roads the way that they're supposed to be done.
As presented here, however, that does not, this doesn't change the PCI that Pete was talking about a few minutes ago. Because we wait, the PCI is gonna go down. It's gonna mean that we actually need to spend more money.
Spend more, correct.
So, in effect...
We may not have a surplus then.
Right.
So, it'll probably be long after I'm dead and gone. Probably not on the Village Board anymore. So, I can come before the Village Board and complain about my road. Okay.
Perhaps.
Okay.
That's what we're here to do. What I did not provide in the packet, but I did provide to the board tonight, it was the first sheet that I, and the three extra that I handed out, at the top, it says 0% property tax refund. And so, what we wanted to do is, we wanted to provide these as, to show the board what would happen if the board approves the resolution at the next meeting, and this goes on the November ballot, and it passes, what would actually happen in different scenarios. So, the first scenario as a base is a 0% property tax refund. And so, with that, in fiscal year 2021, we would actually be caught up. So, it would be approximately five to six years we would be caught up if we were to provide no property tax refund whatsoever. The next two, I'm sorry, the next four scenarios are in regards to a 5% and 10%. With the 5%, I provided a five-year 5% rebate and a permanent 5% property tax rebate. For both of them, we would actually go into the black. We would get caught up in fiscal year 2023. We would do so earlier in fiscal year 2023 with the five-year versus the permanent. Any questions on that? The next scenario is a five-year 10% and a permanent 10% rebate. With the five-year 10% refund, we would get caught up in 2024, very early in 2024, under a five-year scenario. A permanent 10%, we would actually get caught up in fiscal year 2025. You can see, as the amount gets higher in terms of the refund, and if you provide a five-year plan versus a permanent plan, the years get later and later. The other two sheets that I provided tonight at your station were for 15%. So, we have a five-year 15% property tax refund. We would get caught up in fiscal year 2024. For a five-year plan, for a permanent 15%, we would get caught up in fiscal year 2026. And then, the last scenario, as provided, would be a 20% property tax refund. For a five-year, we would get caught up in 2025, and for a permanent 20%, we would get caught up in fiscal year 2027. So, I know I went through all of those very quickly. I hope you could follow along with those. If there are any questions, I can certainly try to answer those, if the board has any.
And our attorney has one comment after that.
Just one clarification for the benefit of the public, is that when we talk in terms of permanent property tax refund, or even five-year, I want the board and the public to understand that that is not binding on any future board. It will take exactly four people at some point in any future to undo those promises. I want that to be clear.
And that could happen as soon as April or May of, of the next year, so.
Just like to make sure the board takes note, too, as you go through, a lot of the zero, the 5, 10, 15, all had a 2024 where you were caught up. But pay attention to that cumulative deficit as you go along. With the zero, that cumulative deficit's a lot smaller. You're getting a lot more work done in those years between now and 2024, versus when you look at that 10 and 15, that cumulative deficit, you know, the larger that is, that's fewer roads that we are able to do in that intervening period.
A question on the revenue model. There, if I'm reading this correctly, we're using the same gross revenue figure for 2016 through 2019, so we're projecting four years of flat revenue.
What we've provided in there is, we have approximately $400,000. The exact number is 394,000 of MFT dollars that we are using right now. We are projecting $1.7 million from the sales tax, so that's where that $2,094,000 comes from, is the $400,000 in...
Plus the MFT.
MFT, plus the 1.7 for sales tax.
And so, you're assuming no growth in the sales tax or decline, and no growth in our population, which affects our MFT, right?
Correct.
So, I think it's a safe assumption.
It is a safe assumption.
Yeah. The one thing that this doesn't take into consideration, I know it's impossible to put on paper, is the 10 years going backwards where we're underfunded. So, you know, it starts at a zero, that we're not in a deficit, but when you really think about it, it's been underfunded for a number of years. There is no funding source. And so, at this rate, 2054, 2055 is when we get caught up. And the other point I wanted to make was that if voters don't approve this, and historically, in this area in this state, voters don't approve increasing taxes, at least in this time, and hopefully, what we're going, what we're gonna do here is make an agreement with our residents that this board is, at least from my end, cognizant that, yes, we are asking you to vote for a tax increase at the, at the store, a sales tax increase, but at the same time, we don't want you to, to bear the brunt of that full burden. And so, we're looking to rebate a portion of your property tax that we charge you every year back to you. And I, I like to think of that as an agreement that we're making, and hopefully, if the board agrees with me, we would approve a, a resolution that would say, until a future board decides not to, or votes not to, then X percent would be rebated. And my intention and my hope would be that in 15 or 20 years, when our sales tax revenues and our utility tax revenues are much, much higher, that we do look to start rebating even more of that, because I think everybody can agree, we're overtaxed here. But this is a very specific tax for the sales tax, and it says that in there, that this is a tax for roads or property tax relief. And so, those are my points on that.
I would agree with what President Brawley said, and I'd like to also add that there are certain items that this sales tax does not, does not, there's, there's no added cost to certain items, trucks, vehicles, that sort of thing. I believe food.
Right.
So, we'd like to make that clear as well. But we're talking about, if you go out and spend $100, you're spending an additional dollar in sales tax, and there are a lot of people outside Montgomery that shop in Montgomery, and that is gonna continue to grow as, as our business development increases. And I would agree with what Matt had said, and the, the two options, the, the property tax refund options that really appeal to me, I'm, I'm not going, going to look at the permanent ones, because as Attorney Anderson said, that's not binding. We can't bind the hands of future boards should they choose to do something different. I'm looking at the five-year 5% and also the five-year 10% as far as viable options. And I think that, that shows that the board is aware that this is really a give and take with the voters. You know, if you're allowing us to do this, and we get our capital improvements program fully funded, which is going to directly affect the roadway in front of your home, we understand that, yes, that comes with a, a certain burden, but we're giving you this, these monies back in the, the way of a property tax refund. And I, as the, the sales tax and utility taxes continue to increase, I would be in favor of continuing to raise that property tax refund until hopefully, one day, maybe, just maybe, there are no property taxes for the Village of Montgomery.
For our portion.
For our portion, correct. You gotta talk to the school district on your own. That's, that's you guys.
I think I agree with Steve. The word "permanent" just makes it too, a person looks at that in a different way than when they can say five years right in front of you. I, I think it's better. It's a modest, and I agree with him, the five or 10. I wouldn't go the 15 or 20. That's really way out. We're taking so much money away, and we're asking them to do a sales tax, really to get less, so it doesn't make sense to me on that. But five and 10, and being, it's a modest, so it's telling the people that, hey, we're giving you something back, and in regards, if you could pass the sales tax, so we could have more money for our roads.
Well, I know in the case of my, my house, as far as property taxes, say I paid $300 to the village, 10% is 30 bucks, so...
5% of that is 15.
Right.
Yeah.
But 30 bucks is 30 bucks.
Well, it is, plus you times, you times all the homes, and that's what we're giving away, basically. And I don't know if we can afford to give a lot more than that and still keep our roads as it is, in case the sales tax referendum doesn't pass. But, and I don't want you to come in when you're 75 years old, hearing the word "permanent" and, and yelling at the, the board here.
No, I'd be...
Pete and I will be gone, but that's right.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't show up until I was 82.
And I think the intent of this ordinance, if we pass this ordinance next, or in two weeks, would say that this ordinance is only in effect if the referendum passes. So, it's not like we'll be obligated, and what I really like is that this is a rebate. We would continue to levy our, our full tax every year, so if, God forbid, Sam's, Menards, or Walmart left our town, then we would still have a viable funding option for the rest of our roads program. But I think, I'm, I'm sitting at, the 15% in permanent is our, is the agreement that I'd like to make with the taxpayers, because 5%, you know, some of the houses, their total levy for Montgomery is $200. So, we're cut, we're writing them a check for, for $10. I don't think that makes as much of an impact, and it doesn't really provide them any serious relief. Not that 15% does. But if your intent is that, you know, if your intent, Justice Youngerman said this, is for five years to do this, and then if we can continue to do it afterwards, I would say, pass the ordinance that says, our intent is to do this or better every year. And if we can't, we'll let you know and we won't. I think people can understand that, that this is our commitment to you. We're gonna rebate this, and if stuff happens and we can't, I know you guys would prefer to have roads that are repaved, because you already voted for it, and then we won't rebate that year. But my intent would be to do this permanently.
I agree with Village President Brawley, that if the intent is to make it permanent, as a, as a John Q. Public, I would hear, five years. Well, there's the out. It's gonna be here for five years, and they're never gonna vote it back in. They're never gonna continue it. Put it in place and force it to be taken off.
But you say the word "permanent," and in three or four years, the composition of the board could change, and then they change everything, and they say, you know what? The previous board, I don't know what they were thinking of as far as this property tax refund. It's no longer perma, it doesn't exist anymore. So, permanent, I think, as a voter, if I hear "permanent," I think that it's above and beyond the five, 10, 15, 20 years. Remember, the Illinois state sales tax was only a temporary thing, and then they threw it into permanent.
Not yet.
Well, not yet, but they're about to.
Yes, they are.
You, we throw this word out, "permanent," and I think that we're doing the voter's a disservice, or the taxpayer's a disservice, that they're thinking, yes, this is permanent, because most of the taxpayers aren't aware that you can't bind the hands of a future board, and the, and a future board can change the direction that we're going.
And, and I completely agree with that. And I, I know that our attorney, with his big dictionary and every word he knows, can find a word that's, that's, explains what, what our intent is, and doesn't mislead the public. Because I, I agree. If you say "permanent," they'll vote for it, and then, and stuff happens in six months after that, and the board can't rebate, then everybody has a problem. But I think you can draft it as such, that we're very clear with our intent in the ordinance.
Well, and this board has already, on several occasions, put some things in place that, in order for them to stop, a future board would have to take action to stop those things from happening, because the intent is to make them continue on. So, if that's our intent, why not bind a future board to have to break the agreement, as opposed to continue to instate it every five years?
And to be clear, I can do exactly what President Brawley suggested. We can draft verbiage that conveys the intent, but does not use the term "permanent," or does not mislead anyone. That's why I just said what I said, just to be clear to the public. But on any ordinance that we draft, we'll be very clear.
Justin, can you, I know Mr. Youngerman said that it's $300 for taxes for the village portion on his house. Average me, give, is that, is that accurate? Is that an accurate number?
That is fairly close to the average. There are some above, some below, but that, I could go back and look at the numbers more specifically, but that is...
It's close.
Close.
It's, so, again, my fear is that when we talk about this, somebody hears, they're getting a 20% rebate on their tax bill, and it's on their $5,000 tax bill, and it's not. It's on this $300 portion over here.
It is.
Which, again, $30 is $30. I think some of the restaurants in town are gonna benefit from that, because people are gonna use that money and, as stimulus money, to go out and do something with it. They're obviously not gonna take the $30 to pay down a credit card, but they might take it and use it as a treat, and it'll help with the economy as well. But I just, I, I really want to make sure that we're clear when we present this to the public, that it's on the village's portion of your tax bill, not the fire district, not the library district, not the school districts.
The one thing you have to remember is the fif, say 15%, that's 5.5 million in 10 years. And don't worry about the house. You've gotta look at the $20,000 for a building for industry, and he's getting 15% off, and that's a lot of money kicking back. And that same guy's gonna want that street fixed in front, because his big trucks are coming in. And I think that's what you also have to look at, is the amount of money we're giving away in 10 years. You're, you know, it's not just the individual that's living in a small house. It's the, the bigger companies, too.
As proposed, and I believe these numbers loosely reflect that, this rebate would be for... be for residents.
Residents only?
Yeah. If it was, if it was everything, it would be 15% of 2 million.
Right.
That'd be 300.
Is that correct? This is for residential properties only?
We have looked at other entities that have done these sort of agreements, and typically those agreements are for residential properties only, and there is usually a request that needs to be turned in. It is not an automatic, we just send out all these checks to everyone. It's usually a request from residential properties.
So a property owner could say, I would rather contribute my rebate back into roads. They wouldn't automatically, they'd have some control over that decision, and I like that.
And that's something that form, we can certainly, staff will work on. I don't think it's necessary to work on that until a referendum passes, and we actually have a form to send out at this point, unless the, somebody on the board or the public was interested in knowing what our intent was. But the intent would be for Montgomery residents to receive a rebate on their tax bill.
If it's not a lot of work, I think it would be good to have a draft of that document to be able to, again, this is the intent, here's the form that you would get, here's what it would look like, so you can apply to get that rebate, so that it doesn't look like it's a false thing here. You know, we've already got a rough draft of exactly what we're talking about doing.
That's something that I think maybe staff should talk about that. We can put together, I just worry about overburdening staff, specifically him, with what he's working on this summer. But I think that's a good suggestion, and I was hoping that the ordinance that we pass would, I guess nobody's really going to read the ordinance, but that and other information, I mean, the village can send out a press release or something about this ordinance that we pass if we wanted to. And I guess some of that stuff's a little bit past where we are at this point, but.
Yeah, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but I think, again, it's another tool in the toolbox. We've talked about toolboxes with economic development. When you're trying to communicate this to the public, the more information we can provide them with and show them what our true intent is, because, again, the public doesn't understand ordinance. It's written by lawyers. So I think it would help, again, if it's not too much work to do that. I don't know if it is, if there's something out there, a boilerplate type.
I can certainly look into it.
The thing that concerns me about a 15% is I look and I see the cumulative deficits that we would be incurring as each year progressed, and I would, I know that that would, during those lean years, we're not getting as much reconstruction and pavement work done. I guess, show me the way, show, talk me into it. Talk me into the 15%.
Right here, 2024, currently, no sales tax passed. We're negative $13,992,000.
And I was going to.
And that's with no sales tax passed, so in order to get the sales tax passed and make that 13,992 turn into, at 15%, permanent at 2024.
Your head's.
You're essentially a million dollars.
$987,000, so, but you now have the sales tax that, two years later, you've, you're good.
And I don't mean to put Engineer Wallers on the spot, but the, do you remember what year it was approximately where you first proposed, or at least it surfaced in your roads program, that we should be spending, you know, the $2 million a year? It was at least five years ago, I think, would be in that.
Sure. Projected 2009, and the money being invested in that project, it was 2014, 2015, or I have to go back.
Let's assume it's 2009, that's five years ago. We're 10 million in the hole right now, from doing nothing. And so I think that's the point of all of this, is that we're trying to find a solution, so it boils down to, if, as you're a voter, what amount, if any, is an agreeable amount to rebate, to vote for it?
So these numbers don't include the 10 million we're in the hole currently. Add 10 million to this, roughly. Again, I don't, you're a finance guy, I don't need you to get your calculator, but that deficit's not in this baseline number. This is moving from 2016 down.
We wanted to take a base year. We used 2016, and we wanted to use a base year and just say, we are starting at zero. Now, we have spent over the last, and that was the presentation that was done back in February by Engineer Wallers, we have spent in excess of $600,000 a year over the last 10 years because of grants and so forth. So, is there, right now, is there a negative amount there? Yes, probably. What exactly that amount is, we cannot put our finger exactly on the right dollar amount. When we have the updated plan later on this summer, we could probably tell you where we're at. But right now, we wanted to use a number that we know.
Yeah, that's fine. I just, I wanted to clarify that we're, this is to start at zero.
Yes.
Not where we're at.
I guess I'm of the opinion, I was leaning towards the 10%, five-year 10%, but I know how important it is to get this sales tax referendum passed. If I have to support a 15%, I will, because I understand how important this is.
And I was going to make the same comment about the 10%, so I don't think it's something that maybe we won't decide tonight. It sounds like there's been some support for five, 10, 15. It might make good sense to have the attorney draft up an ordinance that we can discuss at two weeks. We canceled our committee of the whole meeting for next Tuesday, so if he can present that ordinance with us with the percentage amount, blank, we can have this on items for separate action, we can talk about the amount, and then we can either take action or we cannot.
I'm going to need to miss that meeting. I wasn't expecting it to fall on that Tuesday. If you would consider moving it on another week where I could be involved in the discussion, I'd like to.
Push it away because you won't be there June 9th.
I guess we could probably look into scheduling not having it that evening and having a special board meeting another day that week, if that works for staff and the board. Maybe that's something we can look at this week and update the board. I think it's important that we have the full board for that discussion.
We're potentially, we had canceled next Tuesday's meeting, and we're talking about having a special meeting later on next week.
Keep next Tuesday and.
If we, just for my chemotherapy schedule, I'm going through chemotherapy this week. Usually the end of the week is pretty bad for me, and the, this weekend and the beginning of next week is just really, really bad. It hits me really badly. If you're not available, what I'm getting to is if we can have a special meeting, if we can have it later on in the week, that would be better. It may be very difficult for me to be here on Tuesday.
I think we would reschedule the board meeting on the 27th or later that week. I mean.
But if I, if we, I have to be here on next Tuesday, I will be here. It just.
Yeah, that.
Mrs. Brawley, myself, and Director Young will not be here next Tuesday as part of our reason for canceling it.
Okay.
But we can look at possible days and reschedule that. Staff can call the board on that. I mean, I think it's important that we have.
You're not available that Tuesday, correct?
Whole week.
Oh, the whole week. Okay.
Okay.
Well, that would act, if we can do something the beginning of the following week, no?
I'll be gone, yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll research our options on that.
Okay.
Is it possible for me to participate by telephone?
Did we establish that ordinance?
I know we discussed it, but I don't remember.
I can't remember if we established telephone participation.
I know we talked about it, yeah.
Could we vote on that at the same meeting that he does that then?
No. Well, actually, well, no, because the ordinance doesn't take effect until 10 days after publication. So, no. Sorry.
We can vote on it tonight.
No, you can't. It's not on the agenda. Sorry.
We'll look into our options.
Yeah, we'll figure that out, if it has to be. Okay. We'll discuss. I think it's important that we're all here for that discussion. Any other comments on that this evening? Justy Hines, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay. All right, if there isn't anything else, I think staff has more than clear direction on this, and we'll proceed. Is there any new or unfinished business to come before the board this evening?
I've got one quick item, and I presume our June committee of the whole, that Megan will bring us back the salary issue. I mean, she's got two months here, I mean, it wouldn't take that long, so I presume it's going to be then.
You guys have discussed it?
We are looking at doing the salary survey, and have talked with HR manager, Astrico, and she is going to be starting that very shortly. Once that is completed, we will be bringing that back to the board for discussion.
For June, maybe.
It will go beyond June, I would guess.
It will most likely not be on the June meeting. It's going to take a little bit of time to get the information together, so we will be bringing it back later in the summer.
And it's a summer project, it's a.
It might be a summer project, it's not going to take that long, but I would like to see her ask the question on IT people. I know there's a few villages that have hired recently, and I noticed in today's bills, we got another 10 grand going out for IT, and, I mean, if you're going to spend 150 grand a year, you sure can, I'm not adding, I'm not saying we should add more help, but we can save money on this if that's the, that's the problem. But if she could just get the figures back, you know, somebody just hired one for 70, 80,000, one of the towns, North of Aurora, Yarkeville, Sugar Grove, somebody did.
I have, go ahead.
I have a quick question. I know I had asked you about this privately, Jeff, as far as the nuisance ordinance and the ticketing and the violation stuff and what we can do. That'll be coming up in one of the future meetings here in the next couple of months.
Attorney Anderson and Chief Myers, we're going to discuss that tomorrow.
Okay.
At our staff meeting.
Very well. Thank you.
We have a bit of an unusual situation in Fairfield Way-Foxmore subdivision, where there's only one way in and out of that subdivision, and once again, this past weekend, we had that one way blocked because of an accident at a very busy intersection, and I think that's maybe three times in the last six months that that intersection has been blocked because of an accident, which is of concern to the residents. I know there are some long-term solutions to that problem already in place, but I wonder if we could put on a future agenda, some discussion for the benefit of the residents as to what courses of action we take to prevent that blockage from being a real dire emergency within the subdivision, that we have plans A, B, and C in place, and put their minds at ease about that.
Jeff, is that something that you could either provide a memo to the board, or maybe we can discuss at a future meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other items? Hearing none, future meetings, the planning commission meeting of Thursday, May 15th, has been canceled. The historic preservation commission of May 19th, is that still occurring, Denny?
Yes.
Committee of the whole meeting of May 20th has been canceled. Beautification is on the 21st, has been canceled. Intergovernmental meeting for Tuesday, the 27th at 6:00, and the village board meeting at 7:00 that evening. Staff's going to look this week at possibly rescheduling both of those in a press release or, we'll post that if we do reschedule those. And with that, there is no executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving to second. Take the roll, please.
Justy Hines.
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisick.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.